Yeah, I'll nominate you. Hey, Mayor Packard's not here, I'm gonna nominate Mike Nelson as Mayor Pro Tem.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't hear it from me. Say any opposed. Okay, at seven o'clock, time to begin our council meeting. Welcome, everybody. We're happy to have everybody here. It's nice to see some of our Art City Days dignitaries sitting in the audience. We're, we look forward to hearing from them. We'll start with an invocation by Councilmember Jensen and then a pledge from Councilmember, led by Councilmember Smith.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we can meet here this evening. We're grateful for the fine city of Springville that we reside in and ask that we will continue to be blessed. We ask as Art City Days are coming upon us that we will have a, have a good celebration and that there will be safety among us, as well as the citizens will enjoy and appreciate all of the work that's gone into the celebration. We're grateful to be a member of this country and ask that we can do the best we can to be good citizens, be courageous, and be kind to those in our neighborhoods. These things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. The audience would please arise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'd like to excuse Mayor Packard tonight and Councilmember Wright. I will hear a motion for approval of the meeting's agenda.
I'll motion to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
I will second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any scouts or school kids? Well, school's out, so we probably don't have any school kids. We got any... Looks like we're kidless tonight. We always like to invite them up to come and sit with us if they're here in the audience. But with school out, I'm sure there's a lot more fun things to do than sit in a city council meeting, so we, we understand. I'm kinda honored to be nominated as Mayor Pro Tem tonight because of the people that are gonna be recognized tonight. And that's, that's a lot of fun. It's always a good time to see who we get for our Art City Days dignitaries, so that's, that's great. We have a public comment period. If anybody wants to make a public comment, there's some forms out on the desk, out in the foyer. Just if you wanna make a comment, you can fill one of those out and give it to Kim Crane. And with that, we will move on to our ceremonial agenda and turn the time over to our Parks and Rec Director, Stacy Child. Come on up, Stacy, and wow us.
Tonight's easy to wow you because we're talking about some amazing individuals. Art City Days is upon us. We start this Friday with our wiffle ball tournament, and then Saturday we have our race and the rodeo. And after that, Monday through Saturday of next week, we have a lot of exciting events going on. But to prepare for that, we, tonight we want to honor the dignitaries of Art City Days. And they will be in our grand parade at next Saturday. I want to start, we're gonna go ahead, I'm gonna start and tell you a little bit about our grand marshal, and then we'll turn the time over to Emily to talk about a resident artist, and then Melanie will speak about our Citizen of the Year, and Patrick will finish up with our Business of the Year. So it is my honor tonight to talk about our grand marshal, and our 2025 Prey Grand Marshal is Lee Taylor. And he really doesn't need any introductions, but Lee, do you wanna come up here? So I'm gonna just tell you a little bit. There's a huge write-up in our mailer that went out, but I wanted to share a few things from that.
It's mostly true.
It's mostly true. I think it's all true, and then there's some that's not in there. But let me just tell you a few things. Lee's goal in life is to make people happy through posting local history and photos along with current events that are important. And I think definitely you can't be around Lee and not be happy. He, he has a Facebook site that many residents are aware of, and they're called, you know, it is called You Know You're From Springville When. And so Lee has over seventy-six hundred followers on that, which is really fun. Lee was born in Springville in nineteen forty-six, and he attended Springville Schools. He graduated from Springville High School in nineteen sixty-four. And some of his fondest memories of, are of his, of school and friends, and even today, he likes to make connections, in fact, all over the country. He's been to fifty different states and stays in touch with as many people as he possibly can. He, he went, he entered BYU in nineteen sixty-five, but decided at that point to enter, oh, nineteen sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Oh, sixty-four. We've got a typo, whoops. He decided to enter the workforce and he took his chance in the draft, and he received his draft notice in November of nineteen sixty-five, correct me if I say anything wrong, and he entered the US Army in February of nineteen sixty-six. He was eventually assigned to duty in Okinawa, I say that wrong, probably Japan, arriving on Christmas Eve. After spending a year there, he, as a generator operator on a Hawk mission site, he was, he requested to transfer to duty in Vietnam. And he transferred, and after a thirty-day leave at home, he arrived in Saigon. On January fifth, nineteen sixty-eight, he was assigned, was assigned crane and shovel operator at Long Bin and witnessed the deadly fireworks of the annual TET offensive. On May fifth, he suffered gasoline burns in a motor pool accident and was soon evacuated to the hospital in Japan and was sent home on leave after that. Full recovery, right? So great. He, and he was inside, assigned duty in Virginia and then was released from duty in nineteen sixty-nine. He also had a brother, Kent Childs Taylor. He was killed in a helicopter crash in nineteen seventy while serving in Vietnam. So you are a patriot. We're very, so grateful for your service. Thank you very much. He, Lee has just done all sorts of things. After leaving the armory, the army, he was, he worked at the Pacific State's Cast Iron Pipe and became a journeyman electrician. And in nineteen ninety-one, he went to work for Aerotrans Corporation. All right, and he's directed, he was directing Electronic Division for two years there, and then moved on to IBEW Electrical Workers Union. And he went to, worked for Cash Valley Electric, and he got his Master Electrician license there. And for the next fourteen years, he worked for Cash Valley Electric. And he worked from coast to coast, and generally in the position of General Foreman or Superintendent. And he retired in late of two, in late two thousand nine. He and his wife Lorraine, married in nineteen ninety-four, and between the two of them, they have six children. And they have, did I say fourteen grandchildren? Fourteen grandchildren. And they were married for thirty and a half years. His sweet wife passed away last year, and Lee had been her caretaker for over ten years. He has traveled far and wide, as I mentioned, but I wanted to share some, all the things that Lee does for Springville City. As you know, he is so active and does so much for our city. He is an active member of the Springville Senior Citizens, he's in the Springville Historical Society, and the newly reinstated Springville Chapter of the Sons of the Utah Pioneers. He's a lifetime member of the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars. For approximately fifteen years, he has worked as part of the Springville High School Alumni Association. He has served a two-year term on Springville City's Par Tax Advisory Board and currently serves on the city's Landmarks Commission. And then during the past two years, Lee has been involved really heavily with Springville Museum of Art, helping the museum gather information and arrange for interviews with former art students and art queens leading up to the celebration for our hundredth annual April Salon. And that was held last year. He continues to volunteer at the museum and help with whatever he can. So anyway, when Lee, when he, if he has any spare time, which I'm not sure if he does, he does love to spend time in his cabin in the mountains of San Pete County. That's our grand marshal. Thank you, Lee.
Speech.
Do you wanna come down and have a picture?
If I can, does Lee wanna have a picture with me?
Gonna have a picture with Mike?
We get a speech, or?
Thank you very much. Well, all I, I didn't come prepared with a speech. I just wanted to say that I'm grateful. You know how much I, I love everybody here that works for the city, and I've always got something in my pocket for you. Did I miss anybody that needs a fireball? Anyway, yeah, it's quite the honor. You know, I, I was Citizen of the Year in twenty eighteen, and I, I felt really bad that my wife was not able to attend any of those events and recognition banquets and all those things. I'm glad that my daughter Marcy is here tonight with her husband Greg Crandall, one of my granddaughters, along with her husband. So I do have some family here this time, so I'm tickled to death.
Well, yeah, Mr. King's back there raising his hands. What, what about me? He's here for you, apparently, Lee.
I don't know the guy. Clark King is, yeah, he's actually, he's actually my cousin, a second cousin, on the child's side of the family with a nest, not, and, and his wife and my wife Lorraine were cousins, so we've stayed very close. We're in the same high school class, classes sixty-four, so.
Very good.
Anyway, so it's good to see Clark here and so, so many other people I know, so. Thank you very much for honoring me. I do appreciate it.
Thanks, Lee. We look forward to seeing you in the parade. Emily, you're up. Who's that you're dragging up with you?
Well, this, I feel like all the dignitaries this year don't really need this introduction, but what an honor for me to introduce our resident, not artist, art historian. Vern doesn't wanna be seen to be claiming to be something he's not.
Well, I didn't want that stolen valor because an artist is a very high calling. Like, you're an artist of the camera, and, and I didn't wanna steal your valor. I, I'm a failed artist. I'm an art historian.
But really, we'll go through. Vern is, I think there's a lot of ways Vern is really responsible for us still being known as, as Art City today and has done more for Art City than almost anyone, and for the arts. So we are really honored to honor Dr. Vern G. Swanson, Grosvenor Swanson.
Grosvenor.
Grosvenor, former director of the Springville Museum of Art as Springville's twenty-twenty-five Art City Days Resident Art Historian. So Vern was born in the small Sawmill and Orchard Town of Central Point in southern Oregon, and was interested in art as a child, and grew up in this small town. He has a very, if you ever want a funny joke about how small Vern's town was, he has a great one.
So small. That the town drunk and the village idiot were the same person? I don't know who they got to replace me when I was. And you're supposed to go down and dance, you know?
But then he came to Provo, Utah, to attend BYU on a football scholarship. So I don't know how many resident artists or art historians have also played football at BYU.
At, in Springville, two others.
Oh, wow.
Bob Marshall, Wayne Kimball, and I think Bruce Smith.
Okay, well.
Well, no, Bruce was on the ski team, so, but the other two played.
Wow, impressive. Okay, and he loved Springville from the very beginning. He came to Springville, kind of hitchhiked his way here, heard there was this great art museum, got here a little bit too late, knocked on the door, was trying to let someone in. The poor curator, what her name is?
Julie Burckheimer.
Julie Burckheimer.
Snow, Julie Snow.
And they became fast friends because Vern knew the sculptures on display, can point out the, the sculptures. And she said before he left, "One day you will become the curator of this gallery." So she foretold the prophecy. And then he graduated from BYU. He was also an integral part of the Mormon Art and Belief Movement, which is one of the most important art movements of the nineteen sixties. He's also the resident expert on that movement. But he, he worked at the National Gallery for Art. He met Millane Milner, and they got married. He then went, did his master's degree in art history at the University of Utah and was hired by Auburn University.
Forgive me.
In Alabama as an Assistant Professor of Art and Art History. After the tragic deaths of his wife and young son in nineteen seventy-five in an automobile accident, he taught for another year and returned to Utah in the summer of nineteen seventy-six where he met Judy Nielsen, and they married and fell in love, and Judy's-
We fell in love, then we married.
Yeah, first fell in love, then got married. They have two daughters, and no, it's, I, we're a pair, Vern. This is good.
Well, sometimes it does happen that way, when parents, you know.
Yeah, when it's a-
Well, I, I, I brought her on as a, a high school student, a volunteer, right?
Yeah, right, and after I graduated high school.
Yeah, oh, just correctly, from high school, nineteen eight, oh, wait, I mean, two thousand eight.
You know it. I have the, me and Vern are both vampires. Okay, we're gonna get through this because you can tell how much me and Vern both chat together. Okay. Where was I? Anyway, has five grandchildren, two beautiful daughters, and he enrolled in the Cortald Institute of Art at the University of London in nineteen seventy-eight where he received his PhD in art history. Since that time, he's a prolific author and art historian. He's written and co-authored twenty-three books. He's been given the Utah's Governors Award for the Arts twice, and consulted for a hu, many, many clients and brought twenty-four thousand Russian works of art to America and built this museum's Russian art collection. The Springville Museum of Art hired him to be its director in August of nineteen eighty, where he served with distinction for thirty-two years before retiring in August of two thousand twelve. During his tenure, he helped articulate the museum's mission and vision. He quadrupled the size of the permanent art collection, doubled the size of the facilities with a new wing and sculpture garden, and increased the staff and overall professionalism. Being its director was one of the greatest honors of his life. In two thousand twelve, he retired to write books on art, theology, and politics, and to be with his family as much as possible. He continues to volunteer at the museum and to consult for the world's major auction houses and nineteenth-century European and Soviet art collectors. He loves to work with his church, travel with family, friends, work with his fruit trees, and of course, watch BYU football.
And basketball.
And I, I have to say, I think, I don't think you can overstate how important Vern has been to Springville and the museum. I, especially as we really analyzed our history last year with the hundredth, the seventies were this really tumultuous time for the museum. It was really unclear what would happen to the museum after it was no longer with the school. And I think it really, I don't know if we would still have the museum if we didn't have such a visionary leader like Vern and be still known as Art City. I personally, Vern has taught me so much and been an incredible mentor for-
Thank you.
Seventeen years, since two thousand eight when I was eighteen, and we're just so lucky to have him here in Springville.
Well, I'm so thankful that you have a wonderful new director, and she's doing a great job, and she will, she's young, she's gonna do a long, be here a long time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, yeah. Thank you all for this award. I appreciate it, and.
I, I, I think we need our resident historian, Jake Smith, to have a picture with Vern.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Melanie.
We're gonna switch.
Oh, Patrick's up?
Mayor and Council, it's a privilege to be with you this evening. It's, I've been asked to introduce our twenty-twenty-five Business of the Year, and this is kind of a special moment. Tad and I go back a very long time, so. Yeah, kindergarten.
Long time.
Yeah, it's a long time. So it's, it's with a great privilege that I am able to introduce the Business of the Year for Art City Days this year. Let me just read a little bit of a write-up that we have on, on the Business of the Year. So Dell Peterson Auto Body is the business. It's a longtime Springville business and has been selected as, again, the Chamber of Commerce Springville-Mapleton Twenty-Twenty-Five Business of the Year. In nineteen seventy-eight, with twenty-eight years of experience in the auto collision repair business, Dell Peterson decided to start his own business. His knowledge and substantial skills made him one of the most trusted collision repairmen in Utah County. This was the beginning of Dell Peterson Auto Shop, a body shop, in Springville. Working side by side, Dell and his son Tad built the business's first small, a building at three oh nine west, nine hundred north in Springville. The business continues to operate there to this day. Dell taught Tad, from the beginning, about importance of commitment to high-quality work and customer satisfaction. Every vehicle needed to be as important to them as it was to its owner. Their work has the Peterson name on it. Dell passed away November tenth, twenty twenty-four, at the age of ninety-one. He was at the shop nearly every day until only twelve days before his passing. Today, Tad, his wife Amy, and their children Derek, Travis, Braden, and Carmen continue with the same principles of honesty, hard work, quality, craftsmanship, and commitment to their customers and to each other. Dell Peterson Auto Body provides quality collision repair services. It is I-CARE certified in welding, steel confectioning, and aluminum repairs, as well as OEM-approved for repair procedures, Ford certified for aluminum repairs, and UDOT certified for towing with an impound yard. It is a Better Business Bureau, A-plus accredited business, and a member of the National Federation of Independent Businesses. It has been a member of the Springville-Mapleton Chamber of Commerce almost since the beginning of the chamber. The family members would like to express their appreciation for the opportunity of being a part of the wonderful Springville-Mapleton community as a family and as a business owners. They are extremely grateful for the community's continued support in their growing of their business and especially for the friendships forged. Peterson Auto Body.
I think that since Tad fixes cars and Logan doesn't drive one, I think Logan should go have his picture taken with Tad.
It's not all me. I just about brought my dad's work shirt that still hangs out.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Don't we need a picture with Amy in there?
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, the Citizen of the Year is on his way, and so if we could go to the, maybe the public hearing, and then he should be here after that.
Okay, let's go to public comment first.
Oh, public comment.
Yeah, we've got, we've got one public comment. We'll do that and see if he's here by then. Well, thanks, everybody. That was, that was fun, and we have one more, so we'll wait for that. So let's move on to the public comment. We've got one from Chad Kidder. Would you like to come up, Chad, and state your name and address?
Thank you. I'm Chad Kidder. I live on two fifty north, eleven twenty-nine west, over by Art Wing Park, and we've had a bunch going on with twelve hundred, twelve hundred west getting built out last year and this year, and we, there's been a fair bit of concern long-term when I tell people that the city's planning on putting a roundabout on Center Street, where we've had a bunch of kids hit in the last, last couple of years as they've been going to and from school. So I'm told that roundabouts are supposed to be safer, but that's not intuitively obvious. And when I ask why, it's like, well, you have to put the cross crossings away from the roundabout before they're actually safer. And kids are lazy when they wanna walk in a straight line. And so there's, there's a fair bit of concern that what ends up going in there isn't going to actually work because people are gonna do what people are gonna do. And, you know, I realize that there's only so much you can do to get people to do it the way you want. But I'd really like to ask the city to reach out to the neighborhood there, especially to the two charter schools there, Reagan and Merritt, where you have, like, younger siblings that go to Reagan walking to Merritt along Center Street so their sibling can take them home. So I would really, I'd love it if, you know, the city can do some outreach there with the neighborhood to really get buy-in. Because also, just with the traffic that's like generated at Reagan, if we put a roundabout in right next to Reagan at Center Street, you're gonna have traffic backing up onto twelve hundred when it's time for drop-off and pickup of kids. And I just really hope the city will work with the neighborhood there so we get a solution that works for the residents and those that frequent that area in school.
Well, we have our Public Works Director and our City Engineer here. They've heard your comments, and I think they'll be able to address that. In fact, if you'd like to talk to them, you're welcome to do so. Mr. Stapley and Mr. Wilson there, they can-
I think we've been emailing.
Okay, great.
The, the other thing that I wanted to mention a bit was the Art Wing Park. That the pond there badly needs dredged. It's in the last year, probably about a third to a half overgrown.
That the pond there badly needs dredged. It's in the last year, probably about a third to a half overgrown with like cattails or things similar to that. And at the rate it's going, there won't be a pond, you know, in a year. And so if the city can do something there, that would be really nice.
Okay. Did you have a comment, Troy?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I mean, the staff knows about it. The council asked for kind of public interaction and notices as we get ready to do projects. And so you can anticipate that as part of the direction from the City Council, we, we will be in contact with neighborhoods as major projects happen in your area.
How?
How? There'll be a number of different ways. We have a whole suite of things available. They're posting on the website. There can be door hangers and mailers. There can be a variety of things. We have five or six things in our policy that are supposed to reach out so that citizens can be aware that things are happening and then have an opportunity to interact with the staff as we prepare different projects.
Okay. Website's easy, but the door hangers are effective.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Chad. Appreciate it. Okay. Oh, Charlie. Good to see you, my friend. I think we can probably do Melanie's presentation now. Charlie's looking at me like, I don't know that guy.
Yeah, you get us down right here. Yep, we can stand and introduce you to the City Council. So I have the privilege of presenting the Citizen of the Year, Charles Nacos. He was born to James and Tina Nacos in May, on May fourteenth, nineteen thirty-eight. He's actually a twin, and they were so small that they shared a dresser drawer as their bed, correct?
Two and a half pounds each.
Both, his parents were both the second-generation immigrants. His dad was Greek and his mother was Bulgarian. Their first home was a converted boxcar. He has six brothers and sisters. And during his younger years, his family lived in various cities throughout Utah, Oregon, Washington, and California. In his teens, his family moved to Oakland, California, where they owned and ran a barbecue restaurant. He attended Fremont High School and participated in gymnastics, journalism, and drama. Upon graduation, he served a mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Northern Mexico Mission for two and a half years. And within weeks of returning to the United States, he enlisted in the US Coast Guard. He served six months of active duty at Base Almeida in California. And he would serve six and a half years in the Coast Guard Reserves. During that time, he attended Brigham Young University, where he acted in plays and was active in the pep club on campus known as the Young Men. He graduated with a degree in communications and a lifelong love of BYU sports. Charles met his wife-to-be, Lena Ray Perkins, from East Carbon, while living and working in Costa Mesa, California. They were married in the Los Angeles Temple, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, in nineteen sixty-seven. After they gave birth to their first daughter in California, they moved to Utah, where they have been ever since. They have six children, five living, one passed away in a car accident in Hubble Creek Canyon in nineteen ninety-four, and his beloved wife passed away from cancer in nineteen ninety-five. His living children are Jennifer and Spencer Nelson, James, Tina Nacos, Jason, Dahlia Nacos, Jared Nacos, and Jeffrey and Jamie Nacos. They have twenty-one grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren with another on the way. So the other on the way was in February. Have they had the baby yet?
I haven't checked.
Okay. At age eighty-six, he still works five days a week selling manufactured homes at Elite Housing. Still do that? His favorite job, though, was a substitute teacher at the Springville-Mapleton Schools, where he was lovingly known as Mr. Nachos, a play on his name. He has continued to dedicate his spare time to serving his family, neighbors, and church, and continues to give countless hours throughout his neighborhood. Although at his age, he had, in twenty twenty, he had a stroke, and it's limited his ability to provide physical labor, but he still finds ways to serve. His infectious personality has touched the lives of many in the community for the past fifty-three years. This is Charles. Congratulations.
Don't, don't walk away. Don't walk away, Charlie. Craig's gonna come up. So, so Charlie, 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 I know. Charlie, I know your twin brother, Lou.
Good-looking guy, isn't he?
Yeah, it's ama, it's amazing. And I was also in Young Men at BYU.
That's what I, Young Men way back when.
Yeah, that's, they don't even do that anymore, but, yeah.
They reformed.
That's right. Okay. We didn't really get a chance to talk about the consent agenda. Does anybody need anything taken off, or do we want to move for approval of that?
I motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Vote. I can't second, but we can vote.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the public hearing. Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. You should have had a staff report in your packet for tonight's meeting that included some information and background on each of these items. This is an amendment to the current fiscal year budget as we come to the close of the, the year that'll end June thirtieth, so the end of this month. And most of these are just cleanup items and recognition of some events that occurred during the last few months that were unbudgeted. I'll run through each of these, and if you've got any questions, feel free to stop me. And if I don't know the answer, we've got most of the directors here tonight, and they can probably address these as they may have some more background on it. First one is in the General Fund in the Police Department. I think you got a, a presentation a few weeks ago from Chief Haight. He has secured a number of donations from entities and individuals around the community and had the opportunity to expand the K-9 program with a vape detection dog that is to be stationed in some of the local schools. So this budget amendment will appropriate seven thousand dollars of those donations already received into the K-9 program for the current year and cover those expenses for the balance of the year. And then that program is extended into the next fiscal year as well. The next one, you heard some discussion on, I think in our budget meeting, has to do with our firing and EMS. This is really an accounting issue related to our ambulance billing. We switched vendors at the end of last year, and the change in accounting methods didn't get budgeted in the current year. And so this budget amendment appropriates two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in bad debt expense. There's a corresponding increase in ambulance revenue that offsets that. This more accurately reflects the write-offs that occur as ambulance billings go through the write-off process with our ambulance billing vendor. The next item is in the General Fund also, in the library. A library received a grant from Intermountain Healthcare for community programming. The grant's actually for five thousand dollars, and we're appropriating fifteen hundred of that in the current year for a couple of programs in the current year. And then we'll use the balance of that grant in next year's budget. This next item, police, in the Capital Improvement Fund, we have a sinking fund for each of the General Fund departments. I mentioned in the first item, the seven thousand dollar donation and expansion of the K-9 program. There's actually twenty thousand dollars in donations that were received. So this remaining thirteen thousand will be placed in the police's sinking fund for future programming and future budget years.
Bruce, can that, can that sinking fund be used for other things besides programming? I mean, other expenses, or is it earmarked for, for specific things in terms of?
We do account for it in the Police Department. The real question there is what, if any, agreement did the Police Department have with the donors?
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, technically, once the donation's received by the city, it becomes the city's funds, and we can use it for whatever we want. Although we typically try to make good faith efforts to use it for the intended purpose of the donation, which in this case, I believe, is K-9 programming.
Okay.
The next item is in the Capital Improvement Fund in the Streets Department. There are a number of properties that need to be purchased along the twenty-six hundred West corridor over on the other side of the freeway. This is all MAG funding, so Mountain Land Association of Governments provides the funding. There's actually some existing budget for this project, but we need to increase it for specific projects or properties that are intended to be purchased. So this will appropriate seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that'll be reimbursed by MAG for those property purchases. The next one is in the Capital Improvement Fund also for the Parks Department. I believe you're aware that Parks Department secured a sizable donation from the McQuain Ductile Company, one million dollars, and that donation was intended for improvements over at the art park. I think you've heard about that project before, but we've not taken any formal budget action. So this appropriates the one million dollar donation for that purpose.
Let me just make a comment here, if I could. Councilmember Millsap and I were on a kind of a little committee thing that worked with McQuain Ductile, and they were, how would you explain it, Logan, extremely generous, not only in the money, but the way that they worked with staff and council. And we, we had an opportunity to take them around to several places. They chose the Arts Park, and I think it was the best choice.
I think so, and they're really excited to be part of, of making those improvements there.
I'd be happy to have one of these type of budget amendments every time.
Yeah, they, they were, they were just fantastic. Wherever they are, wherever they have a plant, an office, the community that they're in, they, they try to build up as much as they can and participate where they can.
Should be a wonderful addition. The next item is also Parks and Recreation-related donations. You're aware that we've added some recognition elements to the Memorial Park in memory of Al Curtis. There's sixteen thousand dollars in donations that have come in over the last little while, so this appropriates those donations. And there are a number of additional improvements and projects intended for the Memorial Park area to be installed with that additional, those additional donations. This next item is really just related to the first one. I mentioned that the IHC grant in the library was in the amount of five thousand. We're only programming in the current year fifteen hundred, so the balance of that will be added to the library sinking fund in the capital project. That's thirty-five hundred dollars. Just noticed the typo. Should be the Jazz, not the Jax. But in the Special Revenue Fund in the PAR area there, there's an existing project for an improvement to a sport court over in Memorial Park as well. The Parks and Rec Department was able to secure a hundred and forty thousand dollar Jazz grant for that court. So this appropriates those dollars for that project. And then the final two items are really just technicalities in terms of how we need to balance the budget. The seven thousand dollars related to the police donations and the thirteen thou, going into the General Fund, and the balance, the thirteen thousand going into the CIP Fund, all, both related to the K-9 donations to the Police Department. That's all the proposed amendments. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to address those. Otherwise, we'd look to a public hearing and a, and a motion on the resolution.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anybody here that would like to comment or have any questions about this budget amendment?
Seeing that there's nothing, I just propose that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Would somebody like to make a motion on the resolution?
I motion that we approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen to open and amend the General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Special Revenue Fund, and Special Trust Fund budgets for operating and capital expenses applying to the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as outlined in Exhibit A.
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote since it's a resolution. I vote yes. Councilmember Millsap?
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. We have a consideration of a resolution and a real estate purchase contract for Lakeside Landing. I think our engineer, Chris Wilson, is gonna make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Get this up here. So what I'm sharing with you tonight is a program that MAG does to help preserve right-of-way corridors for future regional transportation. So the twenty-six hundred West is a, sorry, my presentation going here. Twenty-six hundred West is a roadway on the west side of the freeway that goes north-south. It's part of the, the MAG, which is the Mountain Land Associated Governments. It's a regional transportation planning entity for the state. And they've identified this twenty-six hundred West roadway as a regional significant roadway. And the identifies this roadway as a future five-lane arterial. As we've worked with MAG on different projects and seek funding from them, we, we have focused on different areas of this roadway. We, we've currently received funding for our first phase of this to finish some connectivity. The blue sections of, of this overall, north goes to the, to the right of the screen. The blue sections are already completed, areas that need possibly additional widening. The red section is, is an area that we did receive some funding for that will become available next year to work on portions from about eight hundred north to fourteen hundred north.
Is MAG reimbursing Provo for the yellow section?
It's identified, but they, they haven't submitted for any funding for that project yet. So fut, future of, of the yellow, I, I, we're not sure of the timeline on that. So the portion that we're focusing on is the green portion that's here, and we're proposing to utilize some of this MAG right-of-way preservation funds to secure property for, for the future road.
So where that kicks over, that's going over to twenty-four hundred?
Correct. So we'll still call it twenty-six hundred West, but it does kick over due to constraints with the, the lake and other constraints related to the compromised elevation. But we'll continue to call it twenty-six hundred West, but yes, it will align over further. The, the push for this now to preserve this right-of-way is for some active development that's happening. Plan, it's in planning stages, and some of it is starting to move forward. So Lakeside Landing is, is an overlay where we have adopted a transect plan for this area. And you can see the, the main corridor, now north-south corridor here is, is representing that twenty-six hundred West. That, that corridor is needed to, for some of the development to happen so that they can get utilities and have additional roadway connectivity. The, the action that, that we're moving forward here is, is to utilize the, the MAG-funded preservation monies to secure five different properties or five different property owners. And the way that it'll work is that the city will purchase the property and MAG will reimburse the city. There's a, a, a small diagram here kind of showing the breakup of the different properties. There's an existing section near five fifty north. It's running north and south already. It's been constructed. This will connect onto that asphalt and then get it down to four hundred south. And the different colors kind of represent the different ownership that. And the different colors kind of represent the different ownership that, that we're looking at.
Hey, Chris, do you know the timeline on the reimbursement? How long it'll take to be...
Typically, it's a forty, what we've been told from MAG is it's about forty-five days. Actually, the money is available now, and it takes about forty-five days to get it transferred. So pretty, it's already available, pretty instantaneous.
So do we purchase the property, and then we get reimbursed? Or do we just present the plan to MAG, and they reimburse us, and we use that money to pay?
So, so we'll make the purchase and then show them that we've made the purchase, and then they reimburse. So that's partly what Bruce presented on, one of the items, was to add money. We already had a, a GL with about a million dollars in it for these types of purchases. And we just needed to add more for the total amount that we were needing to purchase.
Okay.
So the reimbursable items that MAG, so we have presented this to MAG and what they've approved as reimbursables. So they approved the appraised property value of each one. And that also includes a construction and permanent easement. So there's additional widths for construction and permanent easements for catch slopes and things like that that go along with constructing the, the roadway. We're not constructing the roadway all at this time, and we're just preserving the right-of-way. And the MAG won't pay for all of the rad, right-of-way. They'll pay for, they approved to get from back a curb to back a curb. And so there's additional dedication still required by the developers as they come along. They also approved reimbursable, the, the appraisals for each property that was completed is, is reimbursable, and the developer fronted that. And so as we, each one that we follow through with of the purchase, we'll, we can reimburse them for that amount as well. And then MAG also approved a thousand dollars towards closing costs. Some of the non-reimbursable items would be rollback agricultural property taxes. I'm not sure exactly the, the total amount anticipated for this, but we do have money budgeted for twenty-six hundred west improvements that would cover those costs. So for your consideration tonight is to, a motion to approve the resolution to purchase this property and be reimbursed through MAG. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve Resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty, approving the purchase of property that will become twenty-six hundred west within the Lakeside Landing development.
A second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Millsap?
Yes.
Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a closed session, anything like that?
No closed session tonight.
Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
The catch the mayor stuff, are we getting that tonight, or do we come pick that up, or what's up with that? Just mine? These guys will have to come get their own?
And by the way, it's meet the mayor, catch the council.
Catch the cats. Great. Gotta run. Okay, I mean, we can come get it, though. I mean, I just didn't know the...
Yeah, just, just text us or email us when you have it. We'll come and get it.
And then golf carts, right?
Makes it a lot easier.
So we don't need to come down here? We can do that at the church again? Will those parking lines get in the way over there on the water park?
Well, that way, that way they'll know where to line up.
You're just gonna white and black them all out and put them back later.
Okay. Very good.
I propose we end this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate your support and being here tonight. And if anybody needs to contact a member of the City Council, we're available.